Tuesday, October thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, seven PM. We're in the selectman's office at Cohasset Town Hall. This is the meeting, regularly scheduled meeting of the Cohasset Board of Selectmen. As is our custom at the beginning of the meeting. We stand, pledge allegiance, and please join us if you wish. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At the outset of our meeting, we hold time aside for public comments. Are there public comments or items that are not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We'll move along to our first item, new voting equipment. Is Carol here this evening?
No, she's not.
No, I have it.
Do you have information? Okay. For, for those not having an agenda meeting. We are retiring our existing photo, uh, existing voting, voting equipment. And based upon the votes of town, annual town meeting last year. We have funded and are now acquiring new voting equipment.
We are.
That needs a hundred and twenty days. Say that again?
I was talking first.
Okay. That it, that requires a hundred and twenty days lead time for the first national election. From what I understand, the new voting equipment can be used sixty days before any other local election. So, long and short of it is that if we're going to have this ready for March. It needs, we need to vote to decertify the existing voting, voting equipment now. And accept the new voting equipment at the same time. And I believe, Chris, that it's two votes. I don't think there's anything wrong with it being two votes.
So what you have, she said if you read that, that will be considered the vote?
That could be the motion.
Ask for a motion to, as it's stated.
Yes, for motion, I respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen vote to discontinue the use of the AACU vote election machines and begin using the new image cast tabulators at the next election for which they are eligible per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-four, Section thirty-four. The Secretary of the Commonwealth will be notified in writing within five days after the approved vote by the Board. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Do you want to do the, all those in favor?
I was asking you to read the motion.
Oh, oh, no, no, no.
There you go.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, are there any, is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just a-
No, no nays.
Just a quick question, which isn't relevant to that necessarily, but March is the primaries?
March is the, is the primary election, right. And that's really the trigger for, for making the move.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, moving along. Next item on the agenda is a liquor license hearing for one fifty-six King Street, Local one four three Tavern. And a TNA, a TNA Restaurant Group.
I'm sorry, do you need to hold that until the official time, posted time, seven ten?
You can't start till, yep.
We're moving a little, a little early, so we can, we can knock up a couple of other quickies.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
We'll get you back on track.
Stickler's for process here.
We're very happy to be here.
Well, I tell you what, let's, uh, while, while we have a moment, I'd like to let the audience know that the eight forty nine slot for the CCTV budget update has been postponed at the, at CCTV's request. There's, we'll put them on the next available slot in the agenda if we can. And if you would, kids, let's, let's tackle the minutes if we, if you would.
Oh.
You just had, just so happened to have them.
Yeah, I, I just so happen, um, I left my coffee behind, but I did find a lot of very minor typographical errors. So I would request to the Board, uh, in terms of substance, I think the minutes are, uh, ready to be approved. But like, for example, in the first sentence, it says about an article that was approved instead of approved. So if you would give me some editorial license to just clean up some of the grammar after the approval.
Okay.
I think on substance, unless anybody else had other, um, comments. Definitely.
Well, did, uh, any, what comments does, uh, my fellow Board, Board members have?
I mean, as long as the edits are not in substantial change of the minutes, then I would ask for a, yeah, well, second motion.
Yes, fine.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the minutes from, from October sixth?
The substance of the minutes.
All those in favor of accepting the substance of the minutes of the October sixth, two thousand fifteen meeting, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right.
You can keep those if you want.
Thanks.
All right, and then, uh, geez, we're still clicking away for four minutes. How long are your, how long are the selectman updates?
I don't have anything.
You're killing me. You're killing me, tap dancing.
I'll do a quick one.
Okay.
Uh, with these fiscal forums that Chris is hosting and also a number of committee members, a lot of committee members around town are coming to. The next one is October fifteenth, seven o'clock at the committee room at the high school. And the subject of it is going to revolve a lot around the possibility of a meals tax, sales tax that we've discussed. And we've actually had votes on this in the past, so it's always thought of a hot topic. It's an interesting topic, obviously, it's, and, uh, an important one. And we want to hear as many voices as possible to be there to be out of the dialogue. So that meeting is at seven o'clock, uh, this Thursday, uh, October fifteenth. That was, we'll make up a reminder. And how am I doing for using up on the time, Mr. Chairman?
Pretty, pretty good. I watch it pretty good, but then I'll throw some stuff.
All right, go ahead.
What have you done the last week or so? I was looking at, uh, speaking to some of the department heads, seeing what's available for major grants and minor grants that might be available through the state. Spoke to, uh, Brian Joyce, spoke to the chief, uh, police chief, Celia, looking to see if there are grants. Some of them are out there, I'll let you know what, um, what potentially are there. One is a flashing, uh, school sign, uh, Sawyer and on the Pond Street, entrance to the high school and the, uh, grade school. The other one was looking at the, uh, seawall, monies for the seawall. And then, again, investigating options for a public safety building. Those are what I'm working on.
Grant options for a public safety building?
What's that?
Grant options for public safety building?
Yeah, trying to, see what's there.
Interesting.
If you don't ask, I'll give it to you.
Strangely enough, um, we will, uh, we will come back to the selectman updates because we have two items to discuss under that heading with respect to the open board seat.
Okay.
But if you're in fa, you all are in favor of doing so, let's table selectman updates for a moment and turn our attention to the liquor license hearing, because I think it's now seven ten. On my watch, it's seven ten. Okay, um, let's turn our attention to the liquor license hearing for one fifty-six King Street, Local one four three Tavern, uh, TNA Restaurant Group LLC.
Jelly.
Thank you, sir.
Portfolio.
Thank you.
Type something.
You probably should, put in the hearing notice just to be official.
Uh, my name's Anthony Ambrose.
They called me on time and now they're telling me I have to rush. I haven't, I haven't properly announced this, which is true. This is, this being a liquor license hearing, stick to the, stick to the numbers on it. The Cohasset Board of Selectmen acting, acting as liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October thirteenth, two thousand fifteen at seven ten PM in the selectman's office, Town Hall. Forty-one Highland Avenue, consider the application of TNA Restaurant Group LLC, designated business as Local one four three Tavern located at one fifty-six King Street for a new annual all alcohol restaurant license. The proposed manager is Anthony Ambrose. The lease premises is approximately four thousand square feet with one hundred and twenty-four seats in the main dining room and thirty, and a thirty seat bar. The public is invited to offer public input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing.
Just, I mean, that's the old Black Horse Tavern, right? On three A, what it called.
The old, um, Great Nut Grill. And I want to give a correction, we, we have had a name change since that we, that we've entered in, and that we're going to have to write in on the application.
Okay.
And it would be, okay.
That's my neighborhood, that's our old neighborhood. It's the old Chinese restaurant.
Yeah.
It was Cocoa Island for a number of years.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Yep, all right.
You're down to three.
Good luck. You're kind of free. And the name change would be?
We are looking at the Tide Tavern.
Tide Tavern.
Could probably be known as the Tide.
So there would be DBA, the Tide.
Correct, yeah, we're going to do a DBA and the corporation, the LLC is the TNA. My name's Anthony Ambrose, Peter Tedeschi, my partner.
Welcome, gentlemen. So, uh, please, make, make, if you would, make your presentation.
Well, the rest, the rec, as you know, the restaurant has been a staple in this town as, as different uses over the last thirty years. And it has had, um, transient restaurateurs for, for a short period of time. Longest period of time, I believe, was Cocoa Island in the beginning, there was also a ground round. We've looked at that property, you know, on and off for the last six years, driving by, and it's sat there for the last twenty-four months. Peter and I took a hard look at it. And with the new owners of the piece of real estate, the transition that took place with Dunkin' Donuts, we were to come up with a successful real estate deal that would put that restaurant in a position to be successful through the winters and through some ups and downs. It's a, it's always a real estate deal first. And our concept, um, is a chic tavern that will have local seafood mixed uses. Commercial fishermen will have it licensed where we're able to buy directly from them. It's something that I practiced in the past at Blackfin in Hingham and in Boston, and also at Ambrosia, which are very lucky to have had great accolades for, you know, fifteen years in high-end French and Japanese restaurants. This will be a little subtler, but hopefully be able to practice some of my techniques and keep me in the neighborhood, which is, uh, glad, nicer than driving to Boston.
Wait, what do you, um, not, not that it has any bearing whatsoever on the liquor license, but, uh, what are you thinking about for a menu?
It's going to be a mix of, um, seafood dishes, handmade pastas, um, our own cured and aged meats. We will have, uh, smokehouse items, so it's gonna, you, you, you'll see a selection where you're able to eat five days a week. We'll have a chicken parm on the menu, that's a classic. We'll have spaghetti and meatballs, but then you're also going to have an exotic frog raw dish. You have some sushi and some sashimi and some, uh, other delicacies. I'm lucky enough that my background lets me be able to play on both sides of the culinary world on that. But we want it to be an eatery and not just a fine dining restaurant. It's gonna be priced accordingly, that's thirty dollars to thirty-five dollars per head. And not, you know, higher. We'll have great selections of wine and, uh, single malt scotches, bourbons, um, IPAs, uh, microbrews. You'll get a little bit of everything.
Yeah, I, I, I would assume the, the intent is for full use of the bar for food service as well as-
Absolutely, yeah.
You've been in the restaurant business before?
No, I'm not thinking.
You haven't worn you?
He, he dines out probably more than myself, and we looked at it.
That's good.
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, it was the right opportunity.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I was wondering if you're in the map. Do you have a layout of the-
Uh, it's, it's all, the layout and everything is with the application.
Okay.
Our attorneys in Boston did, you know, a traditional application. And, uh, every, everything is on, is on file, complete, complete, uh, layouts, diagrams, seating, number of seats. This was the PR, sort of the, the theme and fluff package, as you, as we recall, just to give a taste of, of the, uh, content of the restaurant.
So I don't think we got the actual layout in our packet?
This is a-
Just the multi-page, uh, nine-page application.
I think, I think there is a schematic of, uh-
Sure there is, 'cause I know it's required with the form.
Oh, yes.
It just didn't, we just got some of the information.
It may not have scanned.
And I'm only asking more out of curiosity, just getting a general sense of, um, what kind of construction work might happen within the building to rearrange?
The physical layout, the, the physical layout will be exactly the same. Mainly because of the, uh, the plumbing and the codes. We've stuck to the same format, which was set up very nicely.
Yep.
It will hopefully be used and managed a little bit better than it has been.
So I hate to say I was not a frequenter, but I remember coming in and then there's the dining halls here and the bar is kind of over.
Yes.
Back, kind of, behind the wall, that's to your right when you walk in.
Yes, the, the, the lounge and the bar will be to the left as you're walking in.
Okay.
Then you'll go forward and there'll be the main dining room. But we have, um, big reclaimed wood barn doors that are going to be on sliders that, so we'll have a private dining room for close to forty people for wine dinners or private functions. And then we can slide the doors and the, the doors will be picked off, the hinges, and we can actually put them on the wall, so they'll look like decoration. And we don't want to use the, the entire room. And, um, it's, I think it's going to be a nice fit for, uh, for the community. And I think it'll have a feel that you'll feel comfortable walking in, in jeans and, uh, you know, shirt or dressed up. We want that, we want that comfortable setting for our, our guests.
And how many seats, uh, dining seats?
It's, uh, the bucket, whatever was on the application, we went with the existing, we went with the existing codes, we found that sufficient.
I think it was a hundred and thirty-four was the band, uh, a little round jammed the dining.
That was the, that, that was the number, it's a hundred and, uh, a hundred and twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
And thirty at the bar.
Thirty, thirty at the bar.
So a hundred and fifty-four total.
Okay.
Thanks, I, I, this was in our email, just to make it clear, so. Questions? Would, uh, would, wanted to make a motion? Actually, I, I, one more question. Um, Steve, good point. What do you, what do you anticipate as your opening day? Assuming all goes well.
We, we would like to, to open mid-November.
Wow.
Wow. Okay. Is there comment from the public?
When are we opening?
No, 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 I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually, I'm asking, I'm asking if the public has, has questions or comments with respect to this. Yes, sir?
Paul Kears, thirty-nine Old Coach Road.
Okay, sure, please come on.
I think it's great that, uh, there's a, a restaurant that's going to be used there. We haven't had one, uh, operating there for a while. Since that time, uh, the town has, um, a lot of residents concerned about the traffic specifically in that area. We've had a lot of conversations over that spot exactly. So with a, now with a restaurant opening, it's going to increase that traffic demand. And if you're going to have takeout service as well, that'll heighten the traffic demand. So I just want to make sure that someone on the town side is going to be able to address that issue before it arises.
There, it's a very good point, Paul. The, uh, this is part of the- Part of the three A redesign, if I remember, which is, that engages you and the planning board?
That our Public Works Department primarily.
Okay, all right. But the point, the, the point is, Paul, that it is actually on the radar screen. I, I, I can't begin to tell you the, the final, final resolution. But it's, it's, it's something that's come to the attention of the state. The state is actively engaged with, uh, with the town to try and figure out ways to reduce the number of curb cuts enter, entries and exits. That particular spot is always, always fascinating in the morning.
I, I'd like to address the, the flow.
I mean, as, as a new tenant, um, you know, the landlord should at least let them know that there is a study to address.
I, I did some research.
Carol, forgive me, I just, make sure that we understand how this works. If you wouldn't mind, make, make your comments to the Board, and Paul would make his comments to the Board as well.
Um, we've done some research, it was one of my biggest concerns for the traffic flow. And, um, through the, the stats that Dunkin' Donuts would say were able to provide for us, there's over between six and nine hundred cars a day that go through the drive-in. That sounds like an extraordinary number. I didn't want to do the restaurant at first because I felt I had an issue with, with the amount of traffic that would flow through. But if we have six to nine hundred cars at peak hours, and you're not allowed to take a left-hand turn up, up until nine-thirty in the AM, I think that's going to be the highest volume of traffic between that and six o'clock. Restaurant hours will be five till eleven at night. And during that traffic pattern, at any rate, you would have to be less than it is during rush hour and also four to five o'clock. And, and I think we'll be, we'll be okay.
By the time the restaurant opens, the parking lot is completely empty and, and there's virtually, you know, I mean, ten or twenty cars go by from five to closing time.
You're anticipating-
His comment is, is spot on, though, it was, it was our biggest concern as well, and that was-
The hours really work, work in our favor. I mean, it's there in the morning and then we're open for the evening, uh.
You're anticipating right now a dinner only?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay. Yes, do you think there's enough parking in that area?
I, I've found that parking is challenging. We've talked to the, uh, two lots to the left and to the right of us, and we may have some overflow ability on that. The, the lot, the lot could be challenging.
It's fifty-seven spots, but again, you know, when we're open, it, the, the lot's almost empty. I mean, every day we, we're there at that time and there's one or two employee cars, and we're going to have our employees park off-site. So we'll have the whole fifty-seven available to the, to the customers.
We, we, we hope we have a parking issue.
And, and it was, it was nicely repaved, the lines were, were darkened in, so it's very clear where the parking spaces are now.
This is just a question out of, uh, me not knowing. So if, if your restaurant hours are, are five to eleven, is that typically what the liquor license hours are? Or does the liquor license extend beyond?
For later, I think we have, I think we have the, the latest, you know, possible-
It's one.
That, that, uh, that, the town, and the town is, and I don't, I'm not familiar with Cohasset.
It's one.
It's one, it's one would be, it's great.
So your license would be two.
It's not that you, you use it, most, most don't have a chance to, but at least we have it that can help with, uh, um, if we did need it for an event.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Super Bowl parties and things like that.
That'd be wonderful.
All right. Further questions?
All right, let's, uh, is the Board prepared to move on the license?
Yes, I, I move that we, um, what are we doing? We're approving as the local licensing authority, this goes through A, B, C, C next, correct?
Right.
So you need a motion to approve from us, um, a liquor license for TNA Restaurant Group LLC and DBA-
Tide Tavern.
Tide Tavern, Cohasset.
Located at?
Located at one fifty-six King Street, Cohasset. It's an annual all alcohol, um, license for a restaurant.
All right, second. All right. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by voting aye?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous three to zero, one abstention. Congratulations, we look forward to you opening.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Let me see again, Tony. The swat doesn't matter. All right. Let's, uh, as soon as Kevin comes back in, we'll pick up the selectman update again.
Is he going to sign?
No, I don't, we could, we could let, give him the ability, but I wouldn't cover him having, not having the stage. Okay. We're jumping around a bit on the, uh, on the agenda. We'll now move along to the completion of the selectman update portion with respect to a discussion of the options for filling the open Board member seat. So, as you may recall from our last meeting, there, there are really three options. The first is to call for a special election, uh, which the Board is capable of doing. That requires a minimum of sixty days for the election to be, okay? The second is that from the Board's perspective is that we can simply opt to continue on as we are currently composed. And the third is that the citizen's petition could be brought forward with two hundred certified signatures from which a special election could be posted. Okay, so there are three different approaches to this. The special, in any case, any special election would be, um, required to have a sixty-day notice from that date of posting. Okay? So far, so good? All right. Anyone want to offer their thoughts?
I thought it was sixty-four days.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm simply going on a, on a, a conversation that I had with Carol. So, um, sixty or sixty-four.
There's actually two different deadlines. So one is with the new voting machines, it's a minimum of sixty days before they can be certified as operation.
The voting machines.
The voting machines, yes, and, and I'm talking about just the election.
Right.
So that, that's one, just re, uh, aspect. It's one twenty, one twenty from a state election, it's sixty from a town election. There's a fifteen-day window between when the notice of election is posted and people have the ability to turn their nomination papers in and forty-nine days from there before the election. So it's sixty-four days by those two pieces.
Does that begin-
Nice job, Raymond. Wayman.
Does that begin the day we, if we were to vote on having it there? So if we did that tonight, it would be, it'd be an election sixty-four days from then?
Well, it doesn't have to, it, it, it has to be, it has to at least.
Yeah, we set it if we did for seventy days, if it was near or to. So this is October fifteenth?
Thirteen.
Seventeenth, fifteenth, November, December, we'd be talking about having an election just before, just before the holidays, which is before the Christmas holidays.
So one, one question I have that somebody actually brought to my attention is, what does it cost to run a special election? Do we have any?
Um, I'd have to double check, um, but we have to have all the required number of inspectors and all of that. Uh, all the voting machines have to be, there's, there's a cost to get them prepped and ready. And, and, um, whether, you know, these are new machines, number, there are also new machines to boot, so no one's been, the staff has to be trained on them in, in time at the, you say, inspectors. And then is the, you know, it's, it's almost always, you almost always do it on the weekend, so there's some, you know, this, there's a deep police detail and other things that go along with that as well. And I can, I can ask Carol for a rough cost.
And, and theoretically, if we were to have a special election, personally, I'm not inclined to, but if we were, would we be able to get the new, uh, new voting machines?
Well, I, at this point-
So we just decommissioned, we just voted to decommission the current, what we've been using. And we're anticipating getting new ones. When do those physically arrive here?
Well, the, the, the trick at the moment is that because we weren't scheduled for November election, we weren't on the priorities. You know, Waymouth, Bridge, other places that are changing over, get them first. Uh, so we were, we weren't scheduled for an election until March, the presidential primaries. I, I forget the exact date on those. But, but, so there was plenty of lead time. Now, Carol, you say we need them on an expedited basis, she could then make the phone call and say, how quickly can you get us the new machines?
Because we did this with the dredgers, didn't we? I just know, what I'm anticipating, what I'm concerned about, on this area, this brought up, is, uh, we've just decommissioned our machines, so we, we can't have an election anyways. Now that our machines are now decommissioned.
Not until, well, not until we get something new.
No, I understand, let me finish, until we have our new machines in.
Correct.
And that would be, you know, sixty, sixty-five days if they all arrived on time and we're going and so on. I'm just thinking about the drama, the additional potential drama of this, this is around the holidays, that we may and may not have the machines in. They may not work, blah, 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 I'm just thinking, you know.
Rea, realistically, based upon that, you, you'd probably be looking at having an election date sometime shortly after the first of the year.
January, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because again, if you're calling for a special election, one of the things that we would need to be cognizant of is, is the likelihood of drawing a reasonable turnout that's representative. The second thing to keep in mind, and I, I bring this up, is that, look, while it might be inconvenient, if you're going to call a special election, recognize that it's for this specific purpose. But going into this year, um, regardless of the financial cost, you also look at the personal, um, contribution that goes into holding an election. We will have this year in all likelihood, well, we will, for certain, have a, um, a, a national primary, presidential primary. And then we will have our annual town elections in May. It's entirely possible that we will have a special election for state senator. As our state senator is running for mayor in, in Waymouth, and, uh, it's possible that he will be elected there. And then this would also be on the docket, so there, and, and none of them coincide. So you could quite literally have four trips to the polls, you know, in a four, in a four-month period.
In this fiscal year.
And-
There's a presidential election.
Right, exactly.
Well, I was actually thinking about it more from the, the town clerk's staff.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
But having, you know, having said that, that's something to bring into, bring into consideration. And among the other things I'd like the Board to consider, um, is whether it's a necessity or advisable. Because I, I point out to the, to the Board and the audience that, um, the selectmen are not a representative group. We're an executive body, and we are elected, each of us, by the entire town. And while some people may have voted for us individually, bless you, or, or not, regardless, we don't represent constituencies other than the entire town. That's our charge. So no one in the town is, um, is short-changed by an absence on the Board, given that each of us were elected by the entire town. The question then really becomes whether or not the Board can operate with four, and operate effectively with four. And that I leave up to you for your individual discussion and opinions. Yeah, go ahead. So, just think-
So, just think of the three options, I think if voter petition goes through, it, it's, I've got.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not a, that's not a decision.
Um, the, um, the other option, certainly you can go to paper if you had to, that would be a paper election, which, depending on the timing is, if we don't, again, paper, pa- paper chat, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Counting chads. Thank you.
Um, so that's always, um, you.
Fine.
You know, Massachusetts was one of the first that did the optical scanning, because of the problem with this district, um, with the House of Representatives, uh, a few years back, I mean, ten, fifteen years ago, so we went optical for that reason, so. Um, we wouldn't have necessarily have the voting machines up and running, um, so you're doubling up probably around the time of the, uh, primary, and I think there's a limit, timing wise, of when the previous election can be around the time of a state primary, um, so I think there's a two week window period that you can't have it, and a week after you can. Um, so, we're limited on when it can be done, and the question is whether, again, as a four member board, uh, it always comes up, if it's a two to two vote, or a split, something as important. It's probably the, the one downside of a four member board, not that it can't be done.
The motion would fail.
The motion failed, yeah.
Yes.
It, just, the only, you know, my inclination too is that i- if we, if we were to hold a special election, and I think realistically, it would be, have to be after the holidays, it would really only be for four months. Because it would only be to fill the remainder of that, the, the, the current term that's been, um, left, so it would only be for four months. So theoretically, whoever, you know, if we had an election cycle, that person would, wouldn't have to run again, but, you know, I don't know, I just think for four months, um, I personally think we should carry on.
So you mean that we could have ended two elections for the same seat, someone would run for it, and then four months later have to run again?
Well, it would almost be, I mean, most people start campaigning like early February, you know, and.
Right. Right. I guess one, yeah, one thing that's confusing in my mind, yeah, that might, I'd be concerned with, with, yeah, the public too, is they get confused between elections. I mean, that's almost close enough where you'd have candidates who then may have to be explaining, well, I'm, I'm running on the May one, no, I'm in the January one, but I may be in the May one, you know, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I kind of agree with Diane's point there, particularly if this was, like, if this was a year and a half or something, substantial period of time. But, I, I think for the few months, considering all the possible discombobulations, I, I also think that the four, the board is, the, the four members of the board, and this board in particular, works very well together. I mean, it's a high functioning, you know, well-led, very commu-, you know, I think we have good dialogue and we reason things out, and I, you know, I've been on just two boards, but I mean, this is a, really an excellent board, so. I'm qu- I'm comfortable with the, the, the four here taking on a load like that for another few months, I'm just thinking in my mind.
Yeah, I, I think so as well, yeah, I mean, it, certainly if the voter petition goes up, that's fine, um, but I, I would lean towards saying, wait till the spring, run as a four member board.
Diane?
I agree.
All right, um.
Carol did give me information, I just hadn't read it.
Four thousand dollars, roughly, two million dollars.
And that is just, like, extra costs, that extraordinary cost, so that doesn't include the taxing of Carol and her staff?
That's, that's, that's programming. Yeah, that's just.
That's just extra.
The ballots, the work.
Coworkers, ballots.
The programming of the election machines, all that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, I, 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 from what I'm hearing, the, the, the board's, uh.
Is there an action?
No, I, I think, I think you're, I think you're absolutely right, the board is opting to stand down at the moment, and as a result, there is no action to take, so.
Okay. All right. Um, are there further comments from selectmen on selectman update? Okay. Town manager, oh, sorry, Diane?
Yeah, I'm just going back to our earlier, I did want to mention that tomorrow night, the Historical Society is presenting a thirty year, um, thirty year post, which is a Eastwick, um, program at, um, the historical, at the Historical Society building tomorrow night at seven P M., which I think will be fascinating.
That's post-production.
That includes thirty years, so.
Thirty years, yeah.
Um, I was asked to, I think Kevin mentioned this last week, um, I'm sorry, are you done?
Just town manager.
Okay. Hidden in plain sight, the drug, uh, drug and alcohol awareness and prevention event, which is adults only, about is your child using drugs or alcohol, it's at Wilkett Commons. Um, there will be speakers including the school principal, uh, high school principal Carolyn Connolly, uh, police chief Bill Quigley, and members of the Safe Harbor Cohasset Coalition. Um, and, uh, the goal is to invite parents into, about what to look for in this one, so, that's supposed to be a very good program, Hidden in Plain Sight, uh, it is up at the, um, Wilkett Commons on, on the twenty-second at seven P M. Um, two quick updates, so I met with Lori a little while ago.
Mentioned one other thing, with that, uh, there was a piece on W B R, the local, local radio station, about the heroin, uh, problem in the South Shore, they specifically mentioned Waymouth and the, uh, drug running that's been going on there. Um, so you can get it on the podcast, you can download it from W B R, I thought it was insightful.
Well, but I, I, not to, I, I quick insight on this too, so when I, when I was at the I C M A conference, um, I went to a couple of meetings on, uh, police and police issues, and this is a nationwide scourge, it just, it's, it's, it's everywhere, everyone was talking about it, so. So, um, two, two quick updates, I met with Lori, Givens our harbor master today, the dredge has entered the harbor, the, the dredging barge is in the harbor.
Right.
Um, they're still waiting for a couple of things to, to come together, the weather seems to be cooperating finally, uh, so the hope is they'll begin as early as next week, we'll be actually dredging, so, uh.
Right.
It's a good update, um, and I'm gonna ask again, remind everyone that the beach is closed, please stay off the beach, I know it's inviting, but once they start work, it's gonna get very loud at, well, it's gonna get dangerous, it'll be moving equipment. Uh, it's just for a couple of months, just be patient, please, um, and, you know, there's, there's, there's lots of equipment up there, it's just not a good place to walk the dog and gets, have, have anyone run into, so please, please stay off the beach and the parking lot.
I think it's pretty uninviting right now, cause it's got so much fencing around it, so I'm surprised.
I think they've had to, they've had to kind of ramp up a little bit, cause people were just kind of wandering through.
Going through it.
Um, but it's gonna get more active, and there is a lot of equipment up there, and, you know, nobody, we, nobody wants to get hurt, um, we want this to be very successful. Um, the other quick update is on the space analysis the selectmen have asked about moving forward with, uh, Brian Joyce and I had a very good call with, uh, the Metropolitan Planning Council folks last week. We have a tentative plan, I'll be getting some more information next week, so, but we're hoping to start this up, and this is an analysis of town buildings, uh, what kind of space we have, what kind of space we don't. Um, kind of utilization we have, what do we need, what, what, what people like, where are we storing things, uh, and, um, that will hopefully begin, uh, in a couple of weeks, uh, early, early November.
Who's doing that again?
The Metropolitan, the M A P C, the Metropolitan Planning Council, it's something they have never done in, in particularly in this way, they're very excited about it, and, uh, the extra bonuses, they're funding it to this point, so.
Good.
It's good news.
I, I have a question, it's just, this just made me think of this, and it's probably off topic, but, um, I've mentioned it before, just, um, about our, our insurance for buildings and whatnot, do we ever get audited to see if we're over insured, under insured?
Yeah, yeah, they, they come in, and in fact, we're meeting sometime soon, in the next week or two? Yeah, they come in every year and we go over it, I've actually asked questions, I'm like, well, when was the last time you looked at this, and when was the last time you looked at that?
Right.
Uh, so yes, and I do look at the numbers and they, you know, we want to make sure that they're realistic, so we have as close to full replacement value as we can.
And who does that? Like an independent audit firm?
You know, we have a, um, we're insured for property casualty through M I A, like we are through health insurance, it's just a different cut, carrier.
So it's a M I A agent will come and go through the portfolio?
Yes. I don't remember, I don't remember the underlying insurance carrier's name, uh, just like, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield, the underlying health provider, they don't provide the insurance, they, they manage it, but the pool of these penalties.
Great.
The town's had that for a number of years, so, but again, we're, we're, actually, our annual review is imminent.
Great, thank you.
So that's it, I, we have a lot of other things on the calendar tonight, so that's my quick, if anyone has any questions, it's me, that's my update for you.
Thanks.
No, all right, let's move along, the, um, the next item on the agenda is, uh, ninety-one Sawyer Street, uh, the review of the original town meeting article and, uh, proposed purchase and sale agreement. We should wrap this up with a discussion of the anticipated next steps and timeline, so.
I have, I have copies of the proposed.
Uh, yeah, uh, there's, there's a quick summary of, I know there's a number of you in the audience that are, uh, here specifically because you're interested in this article, so, uh, uh, feel free to take one of these. The gist of it is as follows, um, we're pleased to announce that after, uh, after the selectmen had voted to recommend the placement of Article sixteen on the annual town meeting warrant. Um, give it, asking the town to give us the authority to negotiate within a parameter, uh, for the purchase of ninety-one Sawyer Street, known as Wilkett Commons or the Senior Center, we moved forward, and over the period of the, uh, the succeeding five months, worked to, um, to address several uh, questions and requests from, uh, the current owner of the building, and our goal was, as stated in the article, to be able to acquire the property, prime for use as a senior center and, and other various municipal uses. Um, I'm pleased to say that with the unanimous vote last week, uh, by the board of selectmen, uh, I'm sorry, by unanimous consensus last week, uh, by the, by the board of selectmen, while we were in, uh, executive session. Uh, we voted to, uh, to present a purch- a definitive purchase and sale agreement, uh, with an authorized purchase price of nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, uh, rounded. Um, and, uh, the additional authorization, as folks might recall, a town meeting was to cover additional expenses for outfitting the building, uh, that, that's still planned. Uh, the purchase and sale agreement for the property contains, uh, both a senior use provision and a deed restriction, which was a, uh, requirement of the seller. Uh, it was a topic of, of great discussion amongst the board, uh, the board finally assented to, to the deed restriction because we, the board believed that it was a, uh, it was an encumbrance which we had prevented ourselves from discussing, uh, as part of Article sixteen, but we went so far as to do that. Uh, and in addition, um, we have offered to the social service league a ten year lease on office space on the second floor, uh, primarily as the conference room there, uh, as well as the right to use, uh, meeting rooms and, uh, in the building on the same terms as any other organization. And that agreement may be extended, uh, at any point on or before the end of the tenure of this period. Um, this is a, you know, that's a, that's a material, uh, conversation with respect to the, uh, the terms of the agreement, and one that carries with it a great deal of value. That, uh, you'll see the detail, some of the details of the, of that in, uh, in this item. Uh, any purchase, of course, has to be approved by the Supreme Judicial Court with the support of the Attorney General's Office, and that is due to, uh, the fact that the S S L has used, uh, restricted funds or trust funds in the construction of the building, and of course, the, uh, the S J C has, uh, final say on, on the release of that. So we are, we are extraordinarily pleased that we've been able to put out a definitive, um, agreement, uh, and we hope it moves forward with all haste, uh, is. I remember that we were all rather surprised that we had a unanimous vote to bring Article sixteen into the town meeting, and the board sits unanimous in its, uh, representation of its desire to acquire the building along these terms, many of which, frankly, took quite a while to, to come to agreement with, so. We're happy to, to entertain questions by individuals if there are any. Please step forward.
Glenn Pratt, forty-two King Street. So, there are a couple of things that are curious to a number of us, so why don't I just get them all out at once? There's talk that there needs to be some changes in the parking, uh, easement made with the, uh, swim trust, is that true, or is that a story?
Do I take that on? Yes. So, um, our coun- town council has had some concerns just about the way it was structured, because it was a private to private as opposed to public to private, and there was some concerns about the verbiage, not the content per se, you know, and we understand the swim trust has to have exclusive use of the parking lot for the swim meets in the summer, they have a separate deal with, um, with the Sasha Music Circus, there's over from parking, those are all preserved, there's some, the, the council recommended that we make some, some technical language tweaks. Um, and town council's drafted something, council to, the swim trust has it, I spoke with Diane Carter of the swim trust today, um, and it's just, a- again, I, I, and I, as I heard, and I told her, and I'll make sure everyone hears clearly, this is just an effort to get it into public-private terms as opposed to private-private terms. Uh, and I'm not trying to delve into the lawyer in this, so the goal, so that, I don't think that should be that complicated at the end of the day, uh, cause I, again, I don't think there's really any fundament, the town is not seeking any fundamental changes to the relationship.
Are changes in that agreement a condition to executing this, um, sale?
Uh, the changes, the changes, any, any change in that agreement would be between the two parties, the swim trust and the town, you, the, the social service league would not be party to it.
But it's not a condition of closing the property?
I don't know that we have any on the property. Well, I, the, the, the goal is to have it done for, it's gonna be some period of time between a sign off of, of, of a deal, uh, and getting through the, the court system. Um, the goal would be for the town to expedite that work and to work this out with swim trust on an expedited basis. Uh, if, if it ends up having to drag beyond, um, for whatever reason, um, I, I think we could probably continue conversations after that, with the social, with the, uh, swim trust separately. But again, I, I, I don't, it's, it's, I, I don't, I don't, I don't foresee it being, um, as a problem, it's not a, I, I give a tendency to see substantive changes, so no, I don't think it's.
The purchase, the purchase is not conditioned upon you working something out with the swim trust?
It doesn't have to be, no, I don't believe it has to be, I think council's, the council's recommended to us that, that it be, but I don't think it, based on our, my understanding, I think we can work this out in a timely manner, and then we can also work on it after the fact anyway. Yes, uh, so.
Again, the, the, any, any agreement with respect to change to that easement is between the parties.
Right.
In this case, the town, the new, the potential new owner and the swim trust, it is not, it does not engage S S L.
Yes. No.
So they're just on parallel tracks?
On parallel tracks, I mean, I, 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 um, yes, they're on parallel tracks.
And with all due respect, I'm not sure that's the answer to the question, is the purchase of the building contingent in any way upon you changing the parking agreement with the swim center trust?
I don't have council sitting here to talk about some, some wording, I, I think we're talking about some wording that may not work well in a public-private relationship, and again, the problem is, I mean, I, I.
Jim, um, would the board, would the board, would the board purchase this property whether or not you're able to change the language in the swim trust parking agreement?
At the moment, I don't, I can't answer that because I don't know the, what, what language might need to be changed, having said that, as we understand the current easement to, as it exists, I don't believe it's a hindrance, okay?
Secondly, uh, we, uh, are awfully curious as to why the length of the lease for the social service league, which is gifting mostly this building to the town, is a consideration. There are organizations that use town buildings and have for nearly a hundred years, why is it so important that we focus in, uh, on this group of nonprofit, um, individuals that has worked so hard to give this building substantially to the town? Why is this an issue and why is it even in here? Why is there any term on it at all?
Well, let me, let me take that for a moment, let's be clear, the town voted to purchase the building, buy, there is no gift, if there's a gift, give it.
That's the correct.
No, no, if there's a gift, give it. There is, there is, the town sees this.
Your council will tell you, Mr. Chairman, that a portion of this building is a gift from the charitable trust.
We've had, we've had extensive, extensive discussions about it, now having said that, I have to admire and respect every ounce of blood, sweat, tears, and passion that anybody engaged in this building has put forward. And that's me personally, and likewise, I think every person that sits here before you tonight will say the same thing, but from the town's perspective, the town is seeking to acquire the building. Okay, and remember that the gift that you, that you see is there because the town gifted the land upon which it sits, all right? So let's be clear, now having said that, originally, the proposal that came to us was for two five-year terms and a lease. That wasn't something that we generated, that was something that was proposed, we went back and said, well, why do that, let's just do ten years with an option to renew, and that's exactly what exists.
Okay.
Okay?
There's, there's a gray area on that, but that's a fair explanation.
Now. I, wait, I, 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 I don't, I don't believe there's a gray area, I'm not an attorney, but having said that, the intent of the board was to propose a ten year lease as opposed to a five and five, and with that ten year.
And with that ten-year lease comes the ability to renew on a mutually agreeable basis at the end of that ten years or before. Okay?
Fair enough. Just to, just to clear the record, I click, Mr. Chairman. The town gave the Social Service League a non-buildable parcel of land. It was only after we were able to work out a land swap with the butter nonprofit swim trust that we were able to have a buildable lot, which is what this project has all been about. We're in this together, so I agree. The other story that we heard today is that the draft, or a recent draft of the purchase and sale that was sent around suggested a reduced purchase price from what we had originally talked about. Does anybody know anything about that story?
The long and short of it is, we can confirm that the purchase price is nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. There are provisions, which Chris can explain, which could potentially lower that if the value of the debt is lowered. That is to say it was paid down. Having said that, the fact is that the board anticipates moving forward with a nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar purchase price, which brings me to the last thing.
And seventy-eight dollars.
Nine hundred and eighty-eight, I'm sorry.
Nine eighty-seven oh seven eight.
Brings me to the last point. And I, and I have to say this distinctly. The members of this board have been very closed-mouthed about everything that goes on here for the single purpose of not letting rumors run wild. We don't and have not spoken to anyone about it and kept our code to ourselves with respect to what takes place in executive session so that we could get to the point of actually having something to present and say, yeah, great, we've got it done. And instead, we've been fighting ghosts and rumors and accusations. And you know, really, we don't play that way. And we don't want to. We represent the town in good faith. I'm sorry that what you heard is not accurate. And I don't mean that to you, Glenn, personally. I mean generally, because you're about the fifth person I've heard from today. Okay? And, and what you see in front of you is the gist and the conduct that we're putting forward. We would like to move this along.
Mr. Chairman, at the town meeting during the discussions on the article, purchase of this building, a resident got up and said, what's going to happen to the money that they receiving from their pledges that are yet to come? Will that reduce the price angle? And you, Mr. Chairman, said, it's none of our business.
That's right.
Are you suggesting to me now that you've worked that into the agreement?
No. No. During conversations with the SSL, there are, the ninety-seven, the ninety-seven seventy represents a couple of things. There is a single largest piece, though, as I think you know, is a, is effectively a mortgage held by Rockland Trust. That's, as I understand it, not being reduced in principle at this point, just being paid on an interest-based basis. There were, there were conversations about, with the Social Service League, about if that was reduced, that particular piece of the equation, that the price would potentially come down, if it got reduced at all. So if it didn't get reduced, then nothing changed, so no. I mean, if they got a chunk in donations and put it towards that, which they're not obligated, then it might come down, but that's the only way. So there's no, there's no track.
So why is it talked about in here then?
Because that's the, that's the, that was, that was the trigger. If, if that number came down, that's the only thing that's really- I have to ask, though, these terms were negotiated with a representative for the SSL. And while I understand your curiosity, are you here as, on a personal representation or is this? Because we will not-
I'm one of those.
Will not renegotiate in public, you understand that?
Of course. I, as you know, Mr. Chairman, am one of those people that have put a lot of work, effort into this project like dozens and dozens of others over the last seven years. So these, this not getting done in the different pieces of information that circulate are frustrating. And this is the first time that it's been an open meeting discussion, so it can come up. So I think this is a good discussion for us and for the community to see. Because up until now, we haven't, nobody has.
I know, and in that vacuum, lots of things can grow. So let me be clear, speaking for the board, and I can't, I can't underscore this firmly enough. The board wants to proceed with this transaction. The board has acceded to several items of material value which we believe are at the limits of Article sixteen, necessary in order to present a viable purchase and sale agreement. And we have done so. We are not, and I, again, underscore this, we are not attempting or wishing to somehow shortchange the financial structure that we presented within the content of Article sixteen. I think that's, that's fair to say. And I'm not mincing words about that, okay? So, and no, we are not proposing, whether in the buy, the purchase and sale agreement or in any subtle way, that any future pledges you take in in some way reduce the purchase price of the building. I just want to make sure that that is absolutely clear. Okay?
Thank you. I noticed there's a discussion here about naming rights. What is, can you tell us what the concern or the thought process on naming gives?
The, the concern raised, and it was, it was understandable, was that people have donated separately on par. And that when you want to be supervision, so there is a provision that was drafted by the Social Service League, the town accepted, which preserves, you know, preserves them, not necessarily forever, right? Obviously, as I said to someone, if we start serving pills, if, if for some terrible reason we all end up eating pills like on the jets or something, we're not doing cooking, and we convert the kitchen into something else, then, you know, maybe that wouldn't be called the, you know, I will say anything. Well, we'll never, we'll never not have a kitchen. All right, so there we go. So if we change the lobby, if we're not having lobbies anymore, right? But otherwise, the town will work to maintain them and keep them in the same basic condition and condition as, ongoing.
So how do you see it, Mr. Chairman, as the next step to executing the documents?
We, the documents have been forwarded to the Social Service League. We have seen an email returned to each of us today. And I believe that should start a discussion for the final steps. The board believes that it has taken the steps necessary and those that we are authorized to take under Article sixteen and willing to take as a board to execute the agreement, and those terms are in front of you. You'll find those embodied in the purchase and sale agreement, which I believe is now a public document. And, and we hope to execute that. Again, we're simply acting as the buyer in the transaction and looking to do this as soon as we can. We have, as you can imagine, a great deal of desire to put senior programming in place. We're going into the flu season, we sure would like to run a flu clinic there, you get the idea.
We did today.
Well, and you're going to need more than one. But that's, that's our objective. Beyond that, it is a bit out of our control, and we have to be perfectly blunt with that. I'd point out that the Article sixteen garnered a tremendous amount of support. I think there were, out of the entire auditorium, two or three nay votes. We believe we've executed, as I said, at the outer bands of where we're authorized to go with this. And we would like to move forward now. And again, you know, it's very much the same way. You put an offer in on a property. You can't make the seller act quickly or in a particular way. You very simply hope that they look at your qualifications, they look at what's come forward, and they recognize that it's viable and they can execute. They, in this case, at the bottom. And so-
Do you think that the signing of the purchase sale would be an agenda item at a public, open meeting? Or will it be just an administrative function?
I believe these is, I believe these will be part of an open meeting. I think we'd celebrate it to be honest.
Along with the cake, yeah.
I think it has to be public.
Yes, absolutely.
I do, I quit, you know, I think so. I'm very, I'm optimistic about this, very optimistic about this. There's been a lot of work done on it. For the first time, I think a lot, you and Ray Allen, a lot of people have now got before you a complete package, complete deal. You can read it over, we're very, this is the deal we have put forward with a lot of work. It gives all the major stuff that has been asked for, particularly if you read the deed and so forth, the way it's transferred. The, I've seen these things occur before, a lot of times. And when a deal reaches to this point, you may know too, this is when the tensions get highest. Towards the end, that's just the way these things go. The best thing I can think can be done is for the Social Service League to take this and get back to us very specifically with any concerns they might have, not any particularly emotions in the past and all that. I can't, you know, the things that you've brought up are kind of the things that have been brought up. Anybody who's listening or reads these documents don't see these as huge, you know, deal-killing issues. We've resolved those after a lot of time. So just come back to us. You know, ideally, the way this goes is through a brief iteration. They can take the same documents back and change them in the few points that they want them. We can look at it, if it looks good, maybe that'll go. If not, we go back. But if they come back specifically with what they want, then we can deal with that. We can sit and we can make our comments, and that's the way this will go pretty quickly, I think. I'm optimistic this, we have a deal here, everybody now can see it, here it is, it's there, it's possible.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. By the way, before you, before you leave, I just want to make sure that, one more time, coming from the board. The board appreciates, every one of us individually appreciates, the enormous amount of personal time, capital, energy that you and other friends of this project have taken on, put forward, pulled out of your own pockets to just to make that building a reality. We recognize that. And not only do we recognize it, but frankly, you have to honor it. I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a project that's selfless in its, in its magnitude and what you've accomplished. Okay? My comments to you all that this is a purchase is a legal comment. It's not a dismissive one. And that's what I want to make certain that each of you understand. I believe Marita is the chair of the Social Service League. Were she here this evening? I'd want her to hear this from my own, my own lips as well. We are stewards for the entire town. So our goal in this is to execute this particular agreement within the boundaries of our authorization, but do so in the best interests of the town as a whole. And we believe that we can make that happen. We could not make that happen, however, within the confines of Article sixteen if it hadn't been for the work and the energy of Ann, you, or Marita. And we recognize that. We recognize that personally, and we understand how difficult this is for many of us to work through this in what has been clearly silence from us, a silence of necessity. Okay? And we are very happy to talk about these particulars with you. Individually here at the meeting or offline, we're happy to do it. But recognize, if you would, that we've tried to keep it this way so that rumors wouldn't get out and be kicked around or generated such that they became somehow self-defeating and deflating. We're just the opposite. We're looking at this and saying, gosh, we're ready to go. This is really, really exciting. Think about it, this is the first new event of magnitude that this town's taken on since, since the DPW building. Not that you can compare the two, right? But think about it, that's, that's an enormous, enormous thing. This is actually, this is new beneficial grounds for an element of our community. And we would be morons if we sat here saying, we want to stop this. No, we don't want to stop it, we want to go ahead. And I hope this provides for each of you in the audience and anybody else that's listening the detail that confirms that we want to move ahead. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, Wayne Sawchuk first. Please, would you mind approaching?
Sure. Basically, what I would like to do is to sort of, first of all, tell you that forty-one years ago, I worked on constructing the town parking lot at the pool, the pool parking lot. I built the wall going along, and when the senior center came, I built the wall going around the other sides who had matched from forty-one years ago, the same stone and everything. So I have a lot of both history in this and other things. And I don't think you really know what you want on the parking from the swim center because it doesn't seem like it's really, it's out there. So therefore, you can't talk to the swim center and you can't talk to the swim center's attorney until you know what it is that you want to do. What I'd like to do is offer myself to help you come up with a solution that perhaps the town could do as part of this, as part of the transaction so that this does not become a stopping point. And the worst thing in the world would be to get down to everything and all of a sudden, no, we have to leave in the summertime and go across the street to some other town property or whatever, and we can't use it. When in fact, there may be solutions right on the property, whether it's doing something with the, expanding some parking up above with it, that would benefit the baseball fields or take some of that triangle and perhaps put some parking there that you could prove after a period of time that there's plenty of parking for everybody to sort of, you know, stay. So these are things that you might not think of if it's only black and white between what's paved now, and there's only eighty spaces there, and what you think you may need during certain times of the year. Because there's also high land outside of the wetland buffer zone and everything, around the back of the swim center that's still town property. So that, and most of it's gravel, so that it would, you know, from what we did with being able to have almost a zero site in terms of getting the gravel from the embankment to put into the thing, we did run across some mites. But to, to sort of make it short, I'm willing to help you come up with a solution working for the town and also for the benefit of the senior center to have the deal go through. And that's what I'm sort of want to offer.
Fabulous.
Fabulous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Paul Kears? Paul Kears, thirty-nine on Coach Road, chairman of the board for elder affairs. This is the first chance that I've gotten to take a look at these two standard form commercial leases. The question I have is, are these the final documents within the last twenty-four hours that were presented to Social Service League?
Yes. I, to be fair, there was an amendment made to correct something in the purchase and sale agreement that they received today, later today. There was, there was, there was a, there was a mistake that had to be fixed, and it was. And it was sent off with an apology on my part that it shouldn't have, there shouldn't have been a mistake here.
But within the pre-teen estate, the lease agreements-
Yeah, the lease hasn't changed.
Are there additional documentations besides the two amendments that we see here that accompany this? Because it seems, it seems pretty elementary. These are the final documents.
And that, this document, the purchase and sale says the standard agreement where everything you see before you is the, is the, is the agreement. A reason for that is so some people won't come in later on and say, it was something a month ago or two months ago. So everything you have here is the agreement, there's no additional documents. This lease here too, by the way, should be put on, is a free lease. There's no, there's no rental charge to this lease.
It's a nominal value.
Is it a dollar charge?
It's a, it's a nominal dollar and free utility.
So we, we haven't-
By the way, the naming rights, I, my apologies, the naming rights piece, which I thought I put on hearing date. So I'll, but that was drafted and approved by Social Service League. But I'll make sure that gets posted.
I just wanted to first understand that, you know, we, we have worked, as the chairman has stated, a very hard and very long period of time. We went and voted unanimously, I believe, or close to it, at town meeting back in May. What we voted for was to purchase or give you the right to purchase a senior center. So since May, we really haven't heard anything other than in Hare City and Skulby, quite honestly, so.
That's right.
That's why we wanted to get this out to you. You now see it. You see where we're at, where we're at anyways.
What we've heard is that this isn't a simple transaction, a simple real estate transaction. But this piece of document kind of shows that it is. We told that this wasn't any ordinary real estate transaction because of a nonprofit. This kind of demonstrates that it is. We also were told it wasn't simple because of documentation and issues surrounding approvals from the SJC or from the Attorney General's office. So I don't see any documents demonstrating that any of those issues have been talked about, resolved, or are still open issues.
Oh, they're not, they says written agreement here that the Supreme Court has got to approve this, it's all in here.
I gotta admit, I know, the lease has nothing to do with it.
The lease, the lease exists, the lease exists only between the town and the Social Service League. It is not a contingency for the sale of the building with the exception that the Social Service League requires that accommodation be made. The SJC has offered no opinion, to my knowledge, with respect to the lease. And as a matter of, a matter of law, I'd be way out of my-
And as a matter of, of matter of, of law, I'd be way out of my league to even speculate on such a thing.
So could, could you help us understand then that we were told it wasn't a simple real estate transaction? It was very complex. So I have, I don't know, six pages here in front of me that seems pretty simple for a lease, right? It, it reads pretty well. As a matter of fact, it says standard form of commercial lease.
Can I, can I just, I, I, I understand kind of where you're going. But sadly, my first marriage ended after twenty years. And ultimately, it boiled down to eighty-three pages, which looked pretty simple. It didn't talk about the heartache. It didn't talk about the sadness. It didn't talk about the scars with the children. It didn't talk about any of that. It just talked about where things go and who gets what holiday and so on. It was a standard divorce agreement, right? Getting to this point has been pretty difficult. For both parties, by the way. It's been pretty difficult. Think about it. I, I asked the audience, I begged the audience, I implored them. Think about all the work that you all put into it, your, the heart and soul from your family, right? And now, there's an entity that's saying, okay, yeah, I think we can, I think we can buy it. But the entity that wants to buy it, remember, the entity is the town. And while they see it and they have, they have a prideful notion of it, they also have a million other priorities that they are juggling. And yet, you're coming forward with this with something that you have quite literally invested your heart and souls in. So when you look at it boiled down into a standard form lease, the only, the only analogy that I can think of is the one I just gave you. No one will ever look at that divorce agreement and see the sadness in both souls, right?
I'll, I'll tell you, Mr. Chairman, the reason I'm here is because many people have forgotten that piece that you're describing. And it's called the seniors of this town co-hasset. I'm telling you now that you're negotiating a contract between two individual groups, the town co-hasset and the Social Service League. And you completely forgot about the twenty years of pain and aggravation that our seniors have gone through. You know, we've had two board members pass away in the last couple of months. It worked really, really hard to get this thing going. And all I'm saying is, we've been told to sit on our hands because this was a complex, not your standard run-of-the-mill, uh, transaction. And then I sit here and I find out that it, it technically is. And I understand, I understand where you're coming from. There is a lot of emotion that's poured into this. I certainly agree with them. All I'm asking is for those of us who have been involved as the third party that hasn't been discussed, where are we at this point? If we've got a boiler standard, uh, commercial lease that we have in front of us that just needs to be agreed upon by the second party, the Social Service League? We have a purchase and sale agreement, um, which would purchase the building. This says they can be in it for ten years. I don't see it, uh, a automatic renewal at commercial reasonable rates. I see that, um, it, it, it's termed out at ten years and that's the end of it. I don't see automatic renewal. It does say that, um...
It's, to be clear, it's a mutually agreeable renewal, not automatic.
Correct. So, um, I, I don't see, um, the part about, um, you know, the Attorney General's Office opinion or, uh, the part that we stated about the SJC. So if those, if those aren't required for Social Service League to sign the purchase and sale and to sign a commercial lease, then what I'm asking for is, if this is as simple as it is now, what are the next steps that would...
We're ready to go. Here, here, we're largely, here it is. You have got the deal, if I may. You've got the deal. The Social Service League has, we're very, we, we want this deal. This is a good deal, all the way around. Come back and sign it. And I think we're off to go. Move on in. Let's, let's get going. That's why I say that. If there's anything in particular, make it in particular, not, you know, we don't want to hear responses. It doesn't help in the negotiation to hear about all the emotions in, in responses from, from the negotiating parties. If there's something in clause seven, six, you want this sentence, none of that, bring it to us in specificity. We'll either say yes or no. That's the way these deals, they iterate back and forth, but we're, we're close to it. So you've got a deal here, and this, this deal is... Even though the ten years I know isn't what everybody wanted, it is for free, but also a lot can happen in ten years. It can get renegotiated. Once this, I'm, I'm very optimistic about the fact, as you and I, that once this thing gets going, everybody's going to be so happy with what this is in two or three years. A lot of good things flow from that. But, um, you've got the deal held. This is it. You've got it.
I, I don't disagree at all. All, all I, all I know is, um, most of the folks in town, uh, believe that this is a done deal. You know, you see the garden club, uh, in the paper, um, everything looks great. We've got the cafe with the seniors, everyone, everything looks great. And, you know, five, six months go by, and, and I will tell you that, um, the, the speed at which the town has moved on this, I thought it was admirable, like, from where we came from. There, there's no doubt in my mind about that. You know, we're, we're the silent third party in this deal. We're not on any piece of paper here. You know, we're, we're the seniors of this town that have been, been waiting to find out, when can we move in permanently?
Well, you can be assured that in this board here, the, the seniors have been on our minds all the time. And I certainly know they have on the other end, they're there. This is what it's all about, is the seniors of this town. So we have to do our work, um, but it's better that we keep our nose to doing the work so that we can benefit as the seniors. It's, it is all about the seniors. To answer what you're saying before, what happened is, once we signed this, which I hope is soon, without any further... And this then has to go to the Supreme Court. It's just under law because it's a trust thing. And the Supreme Court has to look at this and say, and then they look at the original trust that the money, that a lot of the money came from. And they have, the Supreme Court has to say, okay, you, you follow the trust, you follow the law. They have to give the blessing on this. So it's not a done deal until you hear the Supreme Court says that it's a done deal. That's the way these public charities work.
So the chairman stated that, um, these are standard leases for the town, didn't have anything to do with, um...
Yeah, no, no, this is just a lease. Lease is, the Supreme Court's not going to be concerned about the lease.
Okay, so what you're saying then, you're saying, I'm, I'm confused by that because you're saying that the Social Service League can execute these two agreements right now and then we can move in, but then you said we would have to wait for approval.
If, excuse me, whatever we might agree to, the terms contained in the purchase and sale agreement still need the blessing, if you will, of the Supreme Judicial Court and the support of the Attorney General. To be clear, we have gone forward with what we believe to have been the biggest potential stumbling block, which are terms of use and a deed restriction on the building. We have already visited and worked with the Attorney General to determine whether or not they could support that language. And found that, in fact, we believe from their communication with us, that they can support that language. That is to say that what we assume to be the biggest single stumbling block, acquisition of the property through the trust, should be supported in front of the Supreme Judicial Court by the Attorney General for charities, for nonprofits?
Charity.
Yeah, charity.
Charity.
Okay. So if we strike an agreement, it still has to be addressed by the Supreme Judicial Court because the money that was, a lot of funds that went into the construction of this building came from the Hooper Trust. Terms of the Hooper Trust are overseen by, uh, the, the directive, the Supreme Judicial Court directive previously issued. What that means, we think, is that if we struck a deal tomorrow, if this were signed by all tomorrow, that the Attorney General would move to expedite the hearing in front of the SJC. An expedition with, with good fortune and luck might be as quick as three to four weeks. Okay? At the end of that, uh, assuming that the SJC didn't put additional terms in place that the town finds that it can't deal with, we would be ready to go, I believe. There, there would be nothing further to do other than to pass the deed, right? To record the deed.
The town is also ready to begin the bonding process, that amount of money available to, in conjunction with the...
Yeah.
We're ready to, to move.
The funds, the funds exist?
So, so best case would be four weeks after execution of both parties?
I, I, I mean, again, that's an optimistic case because it's the state...
It's the state.
...court system and we have, we would have no control over it other than, uh, having, Chris has spent a great deal of time at the AG's office and has heard from the AG that they would support an expeditions process.
So with that said, so everyone's clear at home, that these are the two final agreements presented to the Social Service League with amendments that are here. And that...
The full package is five different documents.
Okay.
Five, is that right?
So we have, well, there's also, there's also the drainage easement, which is being handled separately with the...
On a separate level.
With the, in essence...
Parking easement.
So... Purchase and sale agreement, standard lease agreement, naming rights provisions, um...
Deed restriction.
Deed restrictions.
And easement.
And an easement. Okay.
So, do you have the five?
I don't have, I didn't distribute the drainage and easement because we're still negotiating.
But are they public records now?
I was still negotiating the drainage changes.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Diane, Diane...
No, I, just that most of the, the, the real document that is complicated, and I think Steve's analogy, while sad, is, is, is very accurate. I mean, this is a distillation of everything that it's going to take to transact, to sell the building. So all the complicated issues that we did have to go through, including meeting with the Attorney General and getting them to be at least theoretically on board with the path we were moving in, are contained within the purchase and sale agreement. Forget the lease. The lease is referenced in the purchase and sale agreement. The sale and the transition, the transition of some of the donated pieces of art had to be negotiated. The deed restriction had to be negotiated. All of those are separate appendices, if you will, to the purchase and sale agreement. So I think the purchase and sale agreement is a distillation of all of the complex issues that we've been dealing with over the last couple of months. And I think, you know, that's what you should read and know that almost all of this, we've come together with the Social Service League on. Um, and, and not every one of it was, every one of these conversations was, was easy, nor were we on the same page at the beginning. But we're at a point where I think we're both talking from, you know, pretty much the same document with, with potential some tweaks. I will also say, I can assure you that when we started talking about this last September, um, and in terms of how we were going to deliver this and queue it up for a town meeting vote, there hasn't been a meeting where you and your board and the seniors in town haven't been present. And I, I can assure you of that. And we have come a long way, and we want to make this work, and we want to make it work. We have to make a legal document work, but we want to make it work because we want a senior center for our seniors and our services. And that is what we're going to have very shortly.
Yes. Can I just, although this may seem like a simple document, it went through hundreds of iterations, hours of work. Work with the, um, Attorney General's Office, um, Social Service League, Chris, back and forth in and of executive session. This is not done lightly. This is done because we believe we can get this done. And this is, I believe, this is a reasonable document, a reasonable purchase and sale. And I, I think it'll work. I mean, I honestly, I, I think maybe there'll be some minor tweaks in it, but we're, we're willing to, we're willing to sign on it. The money is there, we can move in as soon as...
I'm, I'm answering these questions not for my knowledge.
And the, the other comment with the Supreme Judicial, uh, Court, that contingency, that's in, uh, section forty, and that's specific for, um, the approval. But I'm hopeful that that, and very sanguine that they're going to say, this is very, very good. And will bless it, I, I hope.
So this is the final document, is what you're telling us?
So we're ready on this one.
Right, right.
We're hating to be had back from the Social Service League. If they want to sign it, come on on in.
So is there, is there a need for continued executive sessions on this matter?
No, I, I... I tend, I like to have, I'd rather it all be all public, myself.
Just, let's be clear about the, the, the use and need for executive session. It's not to, it's not to pull a fast one on anybody. But rather, it's to negotiate and do some of the, the, the bare knuckles negotiating that takes place amongst the board. Was every, every agreement that we reached unanimous? Absolutely not. But we're sitting here unanimous with that document. Some things I agreed with, some things I don't, but I support the whole document. Do you really want to see the family fights?
No, you don't.
I don't think so.
No, no.
That's why, that's why we have executive session. Likewise, we don't use the public as a negotiating weapon. Not only is it unseemly, it doesn't, it doesn't work. It doesn't build trust. So I, I have to apologize for the nature of how the board works. But the board works for the best interests of the town. And holding a, a public negotiating session does nothing for the town's benefit. Okay? And so coming out of that, and I, I realize it sounds a bit pendantic, and I apologize for that as well. What, what we have accomplished behind closed doors for some six or seven, uh, executive sessions is the result of what's in front of you today. With a board that while individually, we may not be in love with all the provisions, we are, as a board, steadfastly supportive. And we're not backing down from that. We said we would do this. And I recognize that we didn't give the audience, all of you, blow by blow, for good reason. It's not pretty. But we're glad to be here today to give you the blow by blow and say, here's what it is. Here's how we stand. And by the way, the terms of that, of the Article sixteen were here, and we pushed it hard. And we're, and we're willing to do that because we think this is what's going to work.
And, and I, I don't disagree with you. I mean, we, we respect the process. And, you know, we, we abide by that process. And we went to the first special town meeting and then to the annual town meeting. And, you know, going through executive session to kind of make the sausage so that we could see the sausage. One analogy I'd rather prefer. Especially with Anne's Kitchen right behind us. You know, we, we just want to understand that we're at a position now where the terms, um, are in front of us, they're in public domain, and that it's, it's, um, an opportunity for Social Service League and, uh, selectmen, I guess, to execute a document. I would assume there's opportunity for revisions or something. I, I don't know what, what's left to do on these things, but I don't know, um, if there's anything else other than executing a document. There's, you already discussed the parking not being a, a showstopper for us moving into the building, right?
Right. I mean, obviously, I, I don't want them to be eating us. I want to have a, I want, I, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're good. And I appreciate Wayne's offer of assistance. Uh, but I was on the phone with Diane today, so smoothing out the wild rumors, by the way. So I spent time with her today. So, and, and again, the town wants to be a very good partner in that whole area. I mean, it's the center, it's the heart of the town. It's the, it's the pool, it's the library, it's the rack now. It's, it's, it's the senior center. It's a wonderful area. And it's, I'm going to walk.
And you're a town hall?
I, I just wanted to, just get the clarification for the people I represent.
And, and I, I would underscore Kevin's earlier comment. At no time during any of these discussions has there been anything but that interest as part of our conversation. So they have, I recognize that they have, they, seniors generally have not been kept informed, nor has anyone in town, um, by an authoritative source from our viewpoint because we haven't spoken about it, other than amongst ourselves. And that is for the purposes previously discussed. But they never, seniors have never left our, our vision. And frankly, one of our continuing concerns has long been, well, if this doesn't work, then what? And that's been a, that's been a regular part of the conversation as well. So, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there further questions or comments?
One very quick one?
Yes. But would you, Wayne, would you mind, if, the next approach?
In the lease, the only thing that I think is, is sort of, um, questionable is the idea of commercially reasonable terms. And I would love it if it said on the same terms. It would still be by mutual parties, but I think it, commercial to me means that it could be for what regular market rate of resident commercial property would be. That's what, you know, it would be. And the second thing that, um, it says that it cannot be used for any, um, for any, any, not commercial, but, um, I'm sorry. Use of the premises. No trade or occupation shall be conducted. I think what it should say is that what the Social Service League does today is what would be the, what they do, which is, um, it's a combination of things. You know, the Social Service League has been around for one hundred years. And every year, they give thousands of dollars up to needy people. And sometimes they, they interview people and stuff like that. And I wouldn't want that to be considered a, a commercial thing or, or something. They can do that.
So it'd be more, you're writing out to an electrician that wants to have their business there.
So it's all that sort of goes along that practice.
Okay. I don't want to go too far, fielding, but that, that language was from them.
Yes.
Was it commercially by them?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for, thank you for your comment.
You can see that I didn't talk to them.
Are there, are there further comments?
Well, I want to thank each and every one of you for not only your, your interest or your passion. And we hope that the next time we discuss this, it's to sign, all right, and move this process to the Supreme Judicial Court for, for any final ruling. All right. With that, we move to the discussion of the Affordable Housing Trust. Originally, this is, this was put on our agenda for appointments and interviews. We have, we have a number of applicants in. Subsequent to that, you each receive an email, and it has been uploaded since on our, on our OneDrive, that Diane had done some background work and found a variety of items that I think are worth considering before we go through an appointment process. Have any of you had the opportunity to review that?
When did we get that?
I have.
Thank you very much. Uh, that one, it was.
Was it from Diane?
No.
It's certainly uploaded on the, on OneDrive. The gist of it is this, all right? The Affordable Housing, Housing Trusts are actually guided by state law, which are, you know, it's not a small item. And much of, much of what I wanted to discuss this evening is outlined in this piece, called the Municipal Affordable Housing Trusts. But the, the gist of it includes a variety of, of items from the law itself, some other recommendations and suggestions with respect to how the trust is structured. What was surprising to me is that the, the Chairman of the Board of the Trust is the chief executive body of the town. Selectmen are the, the Chairman of the Trust, which is, which was fascinating. I did not realize that to be the case.
Selectmen as a group?
Well, selectmen, selectmen as a group, although the, the selectmen can appoint. Now, mind you, there are, there are towns that choose to appoint the entire body.
Five, four or five members of one of them?
Yeah. Now, the, the, the point of the art, of the articles that Diane sent along are that there are a number of things that, that bear consideration. And the concept of avoiding ready-fire-aim outcomes, I propose that we take a long, a long, hard look at that background information, but just as importantly, recognize what we have already set in motion. Because if you're going to make this, if, if the trust is going to be effective, and recall that the trust itself and the trust officers have, have a fair amount of power to acquire and dispose of property, to negotiate leases, to rehabilitate properties, to define what the affordable housing objectives are.
To borrow money.
To borrow money, right? If.
It's because of enterprise funding.
It is like an enterprise fund.
It's a position of great substance. And I, and, and before we take a step forward, I'd simply ask the board, we have a trust. Does the trust have specific and clear objectives? And there's a reason that I ask the question, because right now, we're setting our feet forward on a master plan. We've recognized a desire and some funding resources to produce affordable housing solutions. But my question is, solutions for what? For whom? What are, what is our order of priority? More importantly, not our order of priority, what's the town's order of priority? And these are questions that I, I, I pose to each of you, because the selection of the trustees will determine the success or failure in the early years of that, of that activity. Okay?
Yeah. One, you know, one thing that this document will look, we had a meeting la, this is last year, so another board ago. I met with Karen and Taffy Knopf Nagel and Chris, and I can't remember if anybody else was there, just to kind of talk about Affordable Housing Trusts. And so, I had dug up this information way back when. And I, I say, look at that and look at our bylaw, which set up the Cohasset Affordable Housing Trust. But one of the things that this document talks about is best practices with the complexion of the board. And Hingham has a very busy, let's put it that way, they have a very busy, active housing trust. And they have one member of the board of selectmen on it, and they have somebody that's a commercial real estate developer, a real estate agent, two bankers, and two real estate lawyers. So, I just want to make sure that when we have a discussion and we make appointments, that we're thinking about appointing.
A balanced.
The right, the kind of representation that we need, given what ultimately the mission is or the goal is for the housing trust, to do that the right way. And I think that the timing is, is good right now, to take maybe a month and then come back and really do a deep dive on this conversation at a board meeting. Because I would love to have something fully formed, you know, certainly before town meeting.
I'd like, I'd like to move action along, but action with a purpose, as opposed to action just to make sure that we filled slots.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay? And as I read through, and I have to admit, I got about two-thirds of the way through and did not finish. As I read through this document, I began to recognize how much we haven't done. We, we have a trust structure, which is helpful. We do not have a defined purpose, current purpose for that trust. And I think that's something that, that needs to be identified. Likewise, we should be looking to then fill the board seats on that trust with citizens who can actively apply themselves to those objectives with some level of, of relevant background. And I, I, I hesitated to say expertise, because I believe that a variety of backgrounds can bring together tremendous value. But recognize that these people are still acting ultimately as fiduciaries that can spend town money, that can borrow money on, 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 on the town's good name, that can, once empowered, really begin to take fairly substantial action. And so, the construct of the board is critically important, as is their mission. Okay? So, I've simply asked the board, if you would, each of us, I know you have already read it, but read through this initial document, because I will set forward, depending upon the schedule for our next meeting, on the twenty-seventh, twenty-third?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. I'd like to structure a more formal discussion with respect to the nature of the trust as it currently exists, what sorts of things we would like to see, and who within the town structure we want to elicit those opinions from before we go ahead and start to fill, fill trustee seats.
Just a little more color. We talked about this a little bit at our last, our last meeting, but Russ is here. He invited, you're going to probably have to help me, he invited.
Shelley Goring.
Shelley Goring, who works for the CPA.
She is the Mass Affordable Housing liaison to CPA.
To CPA. And she, what she talked about was wonderful, and I definitely want to make that a part of our conversation, too, because she talked a lot about how important it is when you have a, one of, a housing trust to make sure they have a mission, make sure there's a plan, not to just go in there and sit around and figure out what they're going to do and be reactive, but to really represent the town. And, and those are the, the best, most robust. And she gave all kinds of scenarios, you know, things that you think are just slam dunks. Well, of course, we would love to offer subsidized housing for acts. Well, guess what? You can't if you're using, you know, government money, state match money or town money. So, there's, there's a, it's, it's a very big conversation, and I want to make sure we do it right. So, I agree with your path.
So, I, I just, I prevail upon the board that we resurface this conversation on a structural basis for the trust, with the objective, my personal objective is that we should be ready to make appointments, ideally toward the end of the year, if not the very beginning of 2016, so that the trust moves forward with a, a clear understanding of what its larger objectives are. How it achieves it, I think ought to be left up to the trustees, to determining, you know, how they're, how to best achieve that. But we likewise have a duty of care here to elicit opinions from other relevant parties in town, whether that be the town government, whether that be, you know, by name, Taffy Knopf Nagel, or the Advisory Committee, or CPC, Capital Budget Planning, which is not a small thing. So, if that, if that meets your, meets your approval, I simply suggest that we schedule that, the beginning of that discussion for the next available slot, and I hope that's on the twenty-seventh. I have no idea what the agenda looks like yet, but we'll talk about that Thursday.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, yes. Understanding how that works, and reading through that, some of the documents, the ability to borrow money in the town's name is a huge responsibility. And I think we really ought to look at that as one of the big things that the town will support if it's reasonable. But that's also, from a fiduciary point of view, that's a.
It's a big, it's a big undertaking.
Big issue, yeah.
Right.
So, I think it's reasonable to have a board that is maybe some with, you know, real estate exposure, some with financial exposure, some with elder affairs.
Some that might represent advisory.
Advisory, yeah. With a lot of input from many, because it is a pretty hefty group.
Right.
They can borrow money, with the majority go to the Board of Selectmen, doesn't have to go to.
Doesn't go to a town meeting.
Doesn't go to a town meeting. So, anyway, it's pretty, yeah. So, read, I say, read the bylaws, read the document, and we'll have a pretty.
I want to consider the woman that you're talking about, you know, her, her role is to help boards and commissions do the, I mean, maybe she could, as part of it, come, you know, and talk with us. She's very, was very good, very knowledgeable. That is her job to.
Yeah, she's more than happy to come in.
Yeah, when we do that on the agenda.
Chris, if, that's something to think of. That might be a tone setter for us, for us to kick off the conversation, if we might be able to gather her for that meeting. If not, I'm happy to, to call a meeting for that specific purpose on a date available everybody's scheduled.
That might be a better, because I think this, you know, you know, a lot of things on a meeting, I think you want to give at least a good hour to this conversation.
Yeah.
And I think having a side specialty meeting for this would be a better idea.
Something information like that, could it be held on a conference call?
What do you mean? I mean, can you participate by conference call?
Yeah, I mean, given that we're.
You're not voting, it's just information.
It's, well, it, it would be worth clearing with town council. I just, I want to avoid any kind of open meeting issue, but if we're gathering information from a resource, it might be easiest to gather all of us, given varied schedules, by way of a conference call.
Oh, you mean a meeting that's all conference call? I don't know. That's an interesting.
Well, Dr. Paul, I, I think there's an advantage to having it in public session, too.
I think there is, but Chris's point is well, well taken. I mean, it's, you know, we're, if we do it during a selectmen's meeting, you've got limited amounts, a, a regular selectmen's meeting, we've got limited amounts of time that we should concentrate on. If we do it on a separate and scheduled selectmen's meeting, that's fine. But if we all have to physically be in one place at the same time, well, that's a little bit harder to do. It's actually a lot harder to do.
You can get two this year, the rest by phone, something like that.
Yeah. And that's why I'm asking.
You can't, I'm kind of certain you can't have it all conference call meeting. I know at least one member.
Has to be chaired.
Hey, I'll publish the dial-in. Anybody can dial in.
We'll do, we'll do, we'll, we'll.
Even if we have to go, even out of two or three weeks, whatever it is, to get a time where.
Get the right time.
Because there is a value to the, the public and potential committee members and so with the B. Again, it's, it's educating and learning all around, you know?
Okay. So, let's see if we can, I, I'll tell you, if you can just get me her contact information, because she ran a business credit. By the time I got the shit.
We need three of us for more.
Her presentation took about an hour.
Well, that's the thing.
But it was extremely important.
Yeah, she's very knowledgeable. She's an expert in this. That's why I wouldn't really be much, that's her job, is to do this.
And to get, to give that person an hour really is a dedicated conversation.
So, okay. All right. Well, let's, if we can, let's see if we can arrange to initiate
with the conversation. And if not, then we'll initiate with topics based upon what we have in front of us that we can begin to discuss.
Do we want to keep it on Tuesday? Is that the goal?
The meeting, I, I, I.
No, let's see what her schedule is, and then, I don't know.
I, yeah, let's, let's see what's available.
Okay. I'll do that.
Yeah, it's probably going to depend on her schedule more than I think.
Yep.
Okay. Can we move along from the subject? All right. No action to be taken here, so let's go to the tractor lease.
So, this was approved at town meeting, and we're down to, the, this lease, by the way, is under the Capital Budget Committee, one of our members who's very experienced chewed through it. It's been looked at by town council. So, I think it's been looked at in a bunch of ways. It's also a little more complicated than the standard bare lease, because it, it was an option to buy at the end and all of that. So, because it's been through several iterations, and because it's more complicated than the usual lease, I will sign it on behalf of town. I'm recommending that the board endorse it, and then I'll sign it. And again, based on the fact it's been, the, it's been vetted by council, and it's been vetted by our Capital Budget folks, I think, I think we're in good shape. So, I would recommend that you vote.
What?
Or authorize my signature, however you want to do it.
My only question is, is, are the terms of the, the financial terms of the lease within the structure of the article voted at town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
How long, and how long is the lease?
Yeah, well, it's, it's five years, but there's a no, there's a non-appropriation clause, as there isn't anything in Massachusetts. So, if the money isn't appropriate any given year, the lease ends and we return the tractor.
And we can, we get it for free? Is it a lease?
No, 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 we turn it, yeah, we, no, at the end of the, yeah, at the end of it, we can, we, we own it, if we keep it for five years.
And what's the, what's the life of the, of a piece of a.
These are twenty, twenty-five year pieces of.
So, we could lease it for five years, and after five years, we own it, and we can use it for another fifteen?
Fifteen, twenty.
Town meeting already approved this, didn't they?
It did.
Yeah, to be fair, this is replacing a tractor that's probably twenty-five or thirty years.
Yes, it is. And Carl and his folks at McGowan, to their, they're still working right now, because it has to.
Right.
But, and again, the town is not in a long haul business for solid waste, but we are for recyclables. That's, so we are, because of our market size required, to move our recyclables to various locations. And we have to move those bins on the, in the yard. So, we need to be able to move. And considering their track record, they'll probably keep the thing going for thirty years.
But if you don't mind, what, what are the basic financial terms?
The annual lease is about forty grand, which is higher than the original amount of capital funds approved. That we're moving the money around within the article. And comes with fully warranty, it's brand new. Actually, it's, it's, these things are built by water, so it's, it's being built. And it'll come fully warranted with all the support from the manufacturer and all of that. So, and again, I, I, I shouldn't have given you the cost of time, I believe it's forty, forty and change.
And, and as you pointed out, it's been vetted by several bodies, but ultimately, is it less expensive to buy it or to acquire it via lease?
Well, this is the way Capital Budget recommended, that they, they required, requested we go this way, because we weren't sure if we were going to want it. And I'd say it's probably likely we'll go five years without them, but if in the, in the next two years we decide we don't want to do this anymore, and we go in a different direction, we can always just turn it back.
Okay. All right. So, it gives us a bit greater.
It's more flexible, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, what do you, what do you need from the board?
I, I guess I would ask for a, a vote to authorize me to sign the lease, I guess is probably sufficient.
I move that we authorize the town manager to sign the lease for the heavy haul tractor.
Second. Are there any further comments? Okay, hearing none. I ask for your vote. All those in favor, aye, four to zero, move along. Recommendations on warrant articles?
Well, I'm happy to report that after being bruised and battered, the Advisory Committee let me go last week, and they voted to support all eleven articles, ten of them by nine votes, and one by six to three.
Okay, the only thing that I'm going to request is that we hold off on Article Four. Hold on. Article Five. And, I believe that's, where?
Six, maybe?
Is it six?
Six, that's capitalized.
Six.
Capitalized.
Just, and, and that's, that's, uh, that's just to, um, hear from-
Capital budget.
-capital budget for their recommendations, just to keep the, keep the, keep the process pure.
What about, what about, uh, Article eight? Has, has capital budget weighed in on that? That's the sewer capital?
They, he didn't, I, I don't know that they're going to, the grinder pump placement's kind of an ongoing, small, it's a, it's a, it's a big project, but it's not, it's, it's a pre-approved project, they're just accelerating it.
And the other one's a fee increase, right?
Yeah, so I, I don't get, they may talk about, I, I don't, I don't think that they're going to look at that.
So-
Okay, great.
Yeah, is it, so that's what, four, five, and?
That's coming from fourteen.
Four, five, and six.
Five, and six, right. Okay, so, uh, so long as the, uh, the board is in agreement, we'll revisit four, articles four, five, and six next, we, uh, next meeting.
Right.
Okay?
And have those for the motions.
Right.
And have those for the motions.
Got it.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Uh, let's take these by article, all right? Article one, amendments to fiscal two thousand sixteen operating budget, which essentially are budgetary transfers, uh, eight hundred and, I'm sorry, eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars coming from, uh, three specific funds, and transfers to twelve separate funds?
Twelve of them.
Uh, no.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay, sixteen separate funds. Again, it's a, it's simply a balancing transfer, balancing transaction, eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars, um, being transferred from, um, three accounts with surplus to sixteen accounts that, that need to be supplemented.
I move that the board recommends Article one to town meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article two, unpaid bills from previous years, uh, you might recall that this is, uh, now just one item, three hundred dollars, um, from permits and inspections with respect to Concom, which was improperly billed to a resident, and therefore, when it's properly accounted for, is a bill to the town, okay? This is from last year. Are there any questions?
I will be support Article two to town meeting.
Okay.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Article three.
Before you, is that three lines at the bottom sufficient, if you notice that?
I did, that was good.
You asked for there to be a little mention of this.
Water Department.
Yes. That's, okay. Yes, I think so.
I'm sure it'll, I'll probably say a comment.
I, I think, I think, um, there's a formatting thing that I think we're trying to fix, but otherwise, I think the language is gonna be the same.
Three and a half? That's the formatting thing?
Yeah, there was, I forget, there was something that they were, so, sometimes I try to fix, you know? I'm gonna get all these votes in, because I have the, I have the draft on my desk, so we'll amend it with all these votes and have the warrant printed if they have any votes.
Right.
Okay, Article three, stabilization funds, um, uh, this specifically is the proposal to make, uh, transfers into stabilization's fund, stabilization funds as follows, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the OPEB trust fund, three hundred thousand dollars into general stabilization, and fifty thousand dollars into capital stabilization. These would all come from certified free cash, um, the selectmen have yet to vote, advisory, add a majority vote in favor.
Uh, what were the issu, usually these have been nine to nothing, so this is six to three. What were the, what were the issues that anybody was concerned about this?
Is that the chairman, or?
So the-
I could probably-
Go me down.
The advisory committee, members of the advisory, clear vescutary, members of the advisory committee had issue with the fifty thousand dollars being put into the capital reserve fund, capital stabilization fund. The fund's at seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Currently, it's gonna pick up a million three in May. Uh, we didn't see any projects attached to the fifty thousand. Uh, it was not clear to us why you would just put fifty thousand into a fund that was that big already and getting bigger.
So-
Okay, that, that was the three that were against it.
Versus, versus putting it into the, um, general stabilization fund.
And what was the argument for it, the six people voted for it?
That, that it's a good thing to do.
That, that it's an ongoing, that the town has made an ongoing commitment to capital, that there's an, an ongoing list of projects, they're not going away.
It don't get funded, yeah.
That when funding's available, adding it to it is just one more down payment. And fifty thousand does pay for a project, uh, even a piece of equipment, it's, it is, it does have value, it's, it's substantial.
And two is, don't the bond raters, when they see you're funding like, things like capital on a regular basis, doesn't that help with our bond rating, or you know that better than I do?
A million three every meeting is regular.
Is, is good.
That's, it, it, to be clear, though, that's, that is a recent phenomenon. It was only ten years ago that we were scraping cash to try and find a way to pay for things.
Right.
So this is a, it is a big deal, the, the five-year projection is fourteen million?
For, uh, for capital projects, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, at least, yeah.
So the, the, the point in, the, the, you can have this debate, and it's a healthy debate to have. Uh, ten years ago, the, you know, the stabilization fund, the general stabilization fund was an empty piggyback.
Right.
Okay, so there's, we, we've made, um, we've made some headway, and, and that's good, and let's continue to do that because the fact of the matter is that, you know, if that stabilization fund hadn't been there this year, we would've, we would've had a deficit from snow building. But the stabilization fund was here this year, and it, and it bailed the town out, right? Likewise, if the capital stabilization fund, uh, struggles, um, you know, you have to wonder, because you have to think ahead on projects. If we're successful with, in reaching agreement with Social Services League, ten years from now, we're going to have something that has to be done at ninety-one Sawyer Street, and it's going to be a big project. Five years from now, we've got a roof to do on the high school, so.
Once money's in the capital station, stabilization fund, it doesn't get, uh, it doesn't get appropriated unless approved by, is it?
Town maybe.
Town meaning fifty percent or two-thirds?
Two-thirds.
So there, there is a safety measure here in the sense that the fifty thousand, the town by two-thirds vote is gonna have to vote to use it in any town.
By the way, that's in and out, so that vote has to be made to put the money into the stabilization fund, and likewise, has to be made to take it out.
Yeah. And, um, we're not gonna, we're not gonna argue the negative side at the special. It's, no, it's just, it was a philosophical argument, and that's not-
Made the point, yeah.
But having, having those philosophical discussions is absolutely worthwhile.
Educates the town, no, it's healthy to have a discussion.
So, okay, um, so, uh, those are the, those are the transfers. Uh, are there further questions on the transfers, or any other element with respect to this article?
I, after speaking with the, the three minority voters on the advisory committee, I'm confident that this, uh, I would support this.
Okay, so.
One second.
All right.
What, a motion?
Oh, a motion to approve Article three stabilization fund transfers for special town meeting.
One second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, four to none. All right, we're moving past Article four, five, and six, move to Article seven, sewer commission transfers. Um, this is, uh, a motion to transfer twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars from sewer retained earnings, sewer better, uh, sewer betterment debt stabilization fund. Uh, you might recall, we've been pretty consistent over the last two fiscal years in making this, since the sewer commission recognized that they would have a future liability were it not for making these transfers. Okay, so, uh, are there further questions, further comments on this?
No, I think this is also a very good article to go forward. It's a small amount, but a little bit as time goes on, it'll, they can use that as necessary. So I make a motion to approve Article seven sewer commission transfers, twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy dollars to recommend to town meeting.
Can I just amend it that we're recommending it, yeah?
Recommend it.
Not approving it, yeah.
Oh, sorry, recommend it to town meeting.
Second.
Okay, uh, any further comment? All right, hearing none, uh, ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Word nothing. All right, Article eight supplemental appropriation fiscal year sixteen sewer department budget, um, oh my God, I can't read this anymore. There we go. Uh, one item is a hundred and fifty-five thousand from sewer department retained earnings for the ongoing grinder pump replacement program. The second is fifty thousand dollars from sewer department retained earnings for an anticipated fee increase from town of Hull. You might recall that when the chairman was here last week, he pointed out that this is a contingency, um, we anticipate that there, there will be a fee increase for that portion of the town, some two hundred homes that's serviced by Hull. We don't know what it is exactly, um, but this is a fair estimation, so, all right.
I move we recommend Article eight to town meeting.
Second. All right, all those in favor of recommending Article eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Word nothing. Article nine, acceptance of statute for the elderly tax exemptions, um, this is done annually, Chris?
Done whenever the state makes a change. I bet they just, the advisory committee chair had asked if, if there was a local option to exceed it, the director of assessing told me no, this is a cap, uh, that we're allowed to go up to, but not the max cap.
Couldn't go for it.
Yeah, in this particular case.
So in this case, we're simply allowing change in the state law.
Correct.
We're going to the cap.
Yes, we're raising it, and again, if you remember, the, the assessor's comment that she, you know, we might be able to cap share another-
Two or three people.
Two, three, four people.
Specifically, it moves from a gross, uh, a gross receipts limit of twenty thousand dollars for a single person and thirty thousand dollars for a married couple, to a whole estate limit, uh, of forty thousand dollars for a single person and fifty-five thousand for a married couple, so essentially, it essentially moves up.
Yeah, that, no, there's a different, does a different concept, I'm sorry.
I apologize, I'm, I'm just reading it.
The gross receipts, i- it's going f-
Eighteen to twenty.
Eighteen to twenty, and-
Twenty-seven to thirty.
Thirty, and then the other one is, is it thirty to forty?
Oh, I see, I see.
Thirty to forty, and-
Okay. All right, so one, one addresses income.
Fifty to thirty, something like that.
One, one addresses income, one addresses assets.
Correct, a non, non-property assets.
Right. All right, so, and so, property assets are-
And your dwelling is excluded in all of it. Your dwelling is excluded from the asset.
So the homestead provision isn't acted for this.
Right.
Okay, got it, pretty much, sorry. All right, so in, in essence, we're, we're aligning ourselves with more generous provisions from the state.
Correct.
Okay. Are there further questions?
No.
All right, um-
I recommend that we, um, we, rec, uh, I, uh, move that we recommend approval of Article nine to town meeting.
Second. All right, uh, no further discussion? Hearing run, um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to Article ten, acceptance of statute appointment of election officers. You may recall from our previous meeting, that this would cede authority to make last-minute appointments, um, to the town clerk, so that the board would not have to post and be convened